Calling Mr. Erickson. Good evening and welcome. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, April 22, 2015, is now called to order. I am substituting tonight for Chair Birch. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Kane, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, and there are several ways for members of the public to participate. Prior to a meeting, written comments regarding an agenda item can be submitted to staff. They're always helpful and welcome. At a meeting, any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an agenda item. During verbal communications, members of the public may speak on any topic not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to the commission tonight, please complete a speaker card. I have a few up here on the desk. If there's anybody else that has not filled out a card and wishes to speak tonight, please make sure you fill it out and turn it to a staff member to my left. We're moving on to the approval of minutes for April 8 of 2015. They were distributed in our packet for this evening's meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Commissioner Hanson?
I'm not sure if I have a correction or not, but relative to, on page three, when we were making a motion to approve the housing element, I had requested that the motion be amended to recommend sending the A house back to the General Plan Committee, but I had given some specific thoughts about that, and I wondered what was going to be sent to Town Council on that front, because it seemed really nebulous, the way it was recorded in the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Typically, these are action minutes, so they really summarize at a high level what occurs, and our transmittal to council will be more detailed.
Okay, so they'll get the concept of the things that should be looked at by the General Plan Committee, and I'm sure they'll have their own ideas as well.
Yes. So may I have a motion to adopt the minutes for April 8? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. I move that we adopt the minutes of Planning Commission Meeting, April 8, 2015, as they appear in draft form.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously. Written communications, we have a desk item for Item 2 of approximately 30 pages. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to read through the material? I see nodding of heads, everyone? Thank you. We have no requested continuances. Subcommittee reports, in addition to serving on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Earlier this evening, there was a Historic Preservation Committee meeting, so I'm hoping that we can hear a report from one of the members.
Commissioner O'Donnell and I attended the Historic Preservation Committee meeting. It was a full agenda, 11 items. We gave final action on 212 Bean Avenue Minor Historic A&amp;S Application. We gave final action on 12 Bayview, another A&amp;S application. We gave a recommendation for the Planning Commission on Item 4, which was 532 and 534 North Santa Cruz Avenue, requesting the exterior modification of two commercial buildings. We had a Minor Historic Architecture and Site Application at 134 Masal. We gave recommendation to Planning Commission for modification of accessory structure at a historical site at 89 Broadway. We gave a recommendation to the Planning Commission for 138 and 142 Stacia Street, which involved demolition. We provided final action for Item 8, which was 45 Broadway, a Minor Historic Architecture and Site Application. And the most important thing we did is that we did not get to the review of historic demolition fines. We're going to review the town code regarding those fines, and that has been continued to our meeting next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reports? Seeing none, we will move on. There are no requested continuances this evening. Verbal communications, we've now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. I see speaker cards for Items 1 and 2, so I assume we have no speakers that want to speak during this period. We have no items on the consent calendar this evening, and we have no continued public hearings, although there is a misprint on the agenda that was published. Item number 1 was misprinted as continued rather than as a new public hearing. So we will move on to the new public hearing of Agenda Item Number 1, which is 471 Rate Avenue Minor Residential Development Application, MR-14-025, requesting approval of an addition greater than 100 square feet to an existing second story on property zoned R-1-D. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the property? Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? Ms. Puga, I understand you'll be giving the staff report this evening?
The green light's on. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The applicant tonight is proposing a 170-square-foot addition to the existing second story, an interior remodel to an existing first-floor bedroom, and a new attached trellis on the front and rear of the residence. The second-floor addition would consist of siding, wood trim, and composition shingles to match the existing materials of the residence. The proposed project was submitted as a Minor Residential Development Application. Pursuant to town code for a Minor Residential Development Application, the notice of pending approval was sent to nearby property owners and residents. The town received one written objection from a neighbor with a concern that could not be resolved with the applicant. Pursuant to town code, the application is becoming before the Planning Commission tonight. Staff determined that the proposed second-story addition to an existing two-story residence is compatible with the neighborhood in terms of mass, scale, and complies with the residential design guidelines. The proposed residence would have the second-largest FAR in the immediate neighborhood at .35 and be the third-largest home with regards to square footage. The proposed second-floor addition is located on the south side of the residence, where a 16-foot, 5-inch side setback currently exists. The town received one letter of opposition to the project. The neighbor in opposition to the project is located south of the project at 469 Rate Avenue. The neighbor submitted an email on February 21 of this year outlining their concern that the project would block their access to visible sky from their dining and living area. Currently, the existing two-story home blocks one window to viewable sky. The proposed addition would block the second window to visible sky. The applicant considered alternatives to address the neighbor's concern, such as offering to pay for the installation of a window along their north-facing wall, or relocating the addition more to the north side of the existing second floor. The applicant chose not to relocate their proposal due to the 5-foot, 4-inch existing side setback that would create more of a privacy impact on the adjacent one-story home to the north. The applicant submitted a letter in response to the letter of opposition the town received. Their letter stated that the proposed addition will not create additional shade on their neighbor to the south. The north-facing windows of the single-family home provide the least amount of sunlight, and the proposed addition will decrease the amount of visible sky but not block additional sunlight. The proposal complies with the residential design guidelines and is compatible with the neighborhood in regards to the required setbacks, floor area ratio, and square footage. As a result, staff recommends approval of the Minor Residential Application, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puga. Are there questions of staff at this time from commissioners? Commissioner Kane?
Thank you for your report. When you make note of or stress visible sunlight and/or visible skylight, are we actually dealing with pieces of the town code, or are we dealing with quality of life?
So the Residential Design Guidelines, Section 2.5.2, that talks about designing with sensitivity to the adjacent neighbors, and that states that existing views are not a protected right. However, additions and new homes should take into consideration impacts on views, sky exposure, and sun access. In addition, the Residential Design Guidelines also has another section for privacy and solar access, and that's 3.11, and that talks about minimizing the shadow impacts on adjacent neighbors. And this application wouldn't create any additional shade, it would just block their visible sky that they can see.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanson?
My understanding is you were able to visit the property with the complaint about the proposed development, and the applicant had also sent a letter explaining their position on the subject and mentioned that there was quite a number of other windows in that same room. Were you able to observe that that was the case?
So the north-facing wall, there are only those two sets of windows, and so one is currently blocked by the two-story residence. That second window would also be blocked by the addition, but they also have east-facing skylights, and then they also have windows along their, let's see, the east side of the home and the rear of the home.
And in your opinion, did it seem that like there was adequate lighting based on being in the room, just on your opinion?
So we were there in the early morning, about 8:00 a.m., so there wasn't any direct sunlight, and based on the orientation of the home, those north-facing windows don't receive direct sunlight. They receive indirect sunlight, just visible sky.
I have a question for you. So can you confirm if the addition was 100 square feet or less, rather than 170, that despite the neighbor's objections, this would not come before us, it would have been an automatic approval?
So if it was less than 100 square feet, it would not require a planning permit? However, it would require a building permit, but there is no public noticing for a building permit.
Would it still come before the Planning Commission with the applicant's objections?
No.
Thank you. We will now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. I have three cards for the applicant, so I'm not sure who will want to come up first or be part of the five minutes. We have Adam Rockwood, Linda Ambler, and Lloyd Marug. I'm sorry. Let me make a, I'm sorry, let me make a correction. The applicant is Adam Rockwood, so if you could please come to the podium. Linda Ambler and Lloyd Marug, you will be called later.
Good evening. My name is Adam Rockwood, and I'm with the firm Rockwood Design Associates, located at 3 High School Court in Los Gatos. Our project consists of an interior minor remodel and 170-square-foot second-story addition to the existing two-story residence located at 47 Rate Avenue, excuse me, 471. In determining the best location for the addition, we determined that the addition would be best situated in the middle of the lot. In fact, the distance to the property lines to the north and south are almost the same at about 16 feet. You can see this on that first sheet, the dark shaded area is the portion of the addition. So it's basically situated right in the middle of the lot. The addition is designed in such a way that the second-story bathroom is stacked above the lower bath. This is due to the fact that we have slab floors in the existing lower floor. And if the bathroom were not stacked, then we would not be able to tie into the existing sewer lines without incurring a high cost of construction due to reworking the sewer lines and plumbing installed in the existing slab. The single and two-family design guidelines of the Town of Los Gatos, as Jocelyn stated in Section 311, with regard to privacy and solar access, states that we should locate structures to minimize blocking sun access to living spaces and actively-used outdoor areas on adjacent homes. The location of our addition is such that we are 23 feet away from the neighbor to the south located at 469, which is the one that has the complaint before you. We'd like to make sure and point out that this is one of the smaller zoning districts, if not the smallest zoning district, in the Town of Los Gatos, and that the existing lot width is only 50 feet. If we were to locate our addition any further north, then we would in fact be blocking sun access to the neighbor to the north. Per the staff report, this project was deemed complete on February 21, and that same day, staff received an email from the neighbors to the south in opposition to the project stating that the project is in violation of the town's residential guidelines, as the project would, in our neighbor's opinion, block sunlight and privacy to their living It is astronomically impossible for our home to be able to block sunlight due to the fact of solar position, and I've provided a three-page document for your review showing the sun angles to attest to that effect. While we feel that we have refuted the argument in opposition of our neighbor, we did try to mitigate this issue by offering to pay for the installation of new windows or skylights or whatever they chose to do with the $3,000 that we offered to try to mitigate their concern. And to date, it is my understanding that the client has not received any reply to that offer. Due to the fact that there is neighbor opposition, our Minor Residential Application was required to go before you as the Planning Commission to rule on our application. We have met all of the residential design guidelines, and the Planning Department has recommended that this application for approval from all of you this evening. And on behalf of the applicant, we would request approval for this application as well. We thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions or clarifications that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwood. Are there questions for Mr. Rockwood? Commissioner Talisfor?
I have one. So I was looking at your roof form, and my question is, did you consider any other type of roof form on that side that would allow for more viewable sky? Why or why not?
Well, just in keeping with the architectural style of the existing residence, it's more or less a craftsman in style. We did consider whether or not it would be feasible to do a shed roof, but stylistically speaking, it didn't really work. It made more sense to continue with the existing ridge line, and obviously, I don't feel that a flat roof would have been architecturally appropriate for the existing structure.
And just follow, and would a gable in any way have helped at all, or would that have just confused everything, a gable facing?
Well, I mean...
It would be awkward, I'm thinking, but...
Yeah, I don't think it would, from an architectural standpoint, and reversing the direction or turning the direction of the gable 90 degrees, it wouldn't make any sense from a design standpoint.
Thank you.
And I don't think it would mitigate the concern.
Thank you.
Any further questions? You may sit down now.
Thank you.
We'll call you back later. I will now call Linda Ambler. I will now call Lloyd Marug.
Yes, so I put together a small PowerPoint presentation and really appreciate the time to allow us to present our concerns over what we feel is compromising our quality of living in our small home. So on the first slide here, let me get this to work, there we go. So indeed, of course, our home is to the south of the property, but what we call sunlight is indirect sunlight, and truly, we are going to be quite restricted by the indirect sunlight in this room. This is our only window facing the north, and I just basically took the guidelines and this photo from the guidelines, of course, and a picture of the window. This is our dining area, the glass table there, where we spend a lot of time, all three meals. So the story poles, really, story poles tell the story. You can see that the left window of the dining area will be completely blocked by any indirect sunlight, and sunlight is the primary source of light in this area. And you can see here the story poles, and I put a little orange pattern there to show how much of the area is totally blocked. So once again, this is a view from our table sitting there during our normal use of the room, lunch, dinner, whatever we are doing as a regular daily routine. Then, of course, it's somewhat stylized. If you look at the bottom sections, they're already blocked by their garage. There's a pointer here. Yeah, here we go. You can see here, this is the garage roof of the residence next to us. This is the structure that currently exists, and then here's the orange netting here showing the story poles. And then, just one more attempt at realizing how it will compromise our indirect sunlight and what the view will be like. Of course, this is just an extension of the wall based upon just a quick PowerPoint cut and paste. So just to summarize, this is our daily dining area where we have all of our meals. We currently enjoy indirect sunlight and a little bit of sky out of this window. The north-facing window receives indirect sunlight in our south-facing, and we don't have any windows in our south-facing, especially in this room, and then in the other parts of the house, it's that our south-facing windows are completely blocked by the home next to us. So, you know, this is more of an extenuating situation where this makes a lot of difference in our one area.
Thank you, Mr. Marug. Your time is up. Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Marug? Seeing, Commissioner Erickson?
So you obviously have some recommendations for us, so could you explain your recommendations to us?
Thank you for asking, and sorry I didn't get to the last page. Of course, we recommend that by the slide here is that we ask that the applicant use other methods or not build the structure. We ask the Planning Commission, please consider denial of the current proposal so that the quality of our home is not compromised. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
When you moved in, was the second-story addition as it is today? Not addition, the second story?
The second, yes.
And that second story blocked one of your windows, sunlight?
Yes, as shown in the first page of the presentation, yes.
So the proposed addition would block completely the sunlight into the second...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. I wanted to ask you about the window, the window that was offered to you. Is, you know, I can't remember, is the wall in your dining area, is that large enough to have maybe a larger window inserted?
In that area, no. There might be one other area that's possible, but we did not take advantage of that offer, realizing that just would not be enough money to really solve the situation.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Did you form an opinion as to how much money would be required?
No.
So you have no orders of magnitude on it? We were offered 3,000, and you just think it would cost more, but you don't know how much?
That's correct, and we feel that even with the additional, whether it's some kind of skylight or some kind of window that would not fit into the style of the home or support the additional light that needed in this area.
Thank you.
So we didn't go down the path, yeah.
Any further questions? You may sit down now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ambler, you have another opportunity, if you'd like, to come up to speak. You'll have three minutes.
Actually, I would just like you to ask me some questions, if that's okay. You've heard everything. Do you have any questions to ask me?
Seeing none, you may sit down now. Thank you. We will now call Mr. Rockwood back up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
So, three minutes. Okay. The recommendation is that we acknowledge the impact on indirect sunlight. We acknowledge that there is impact to indirect sunlight. However, the design guidelines specifically state in his first slide, can you put that up for me?
Can you also lift the mic when you speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
And you can actually take it out so that you can have it in front of you if you'd like, just pull it right out.
So this slide is stating the Los Gatos Residential Design Guidelines 311.1, which is minimizing shadow impacts on adjacent structures, and it's showing a picture of indirect light, which I acknowledge will be blocked, but showing a diagram that is meant to illustrate that we're not supposed to block visible sunlight. So it's kind of a hybrid diagram, in my opinion, and all the documentation that we have received in preparation for this hearing was that we are blocking sunlight and not visible sky. So I do acknowledge that we are blocking visible sky, but again, the design skylight, especially on, you know, if this were an acre lot and we were building a home directly adjacent to another, you know, home, I would understand, you know, and we would try to mitigate that. But we're talking about a 50-foot-litre lot that has 5-foot setbacks on each side. So our buildable width is only 40 feet. We've located the edge of the addition 23 feet away from the existing structure of their residence. So from a mitigation standpoint, if I start to move it more north, I will be, in relation to this guideline, blocking the direct solar access of the neighbor to the north. So I don't see any other way to mitigate the concern except for what my client did was offering more money to try to allow the, our neighbor to have more indirect sunlight into their home, which they refused.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
How was the $3,000 figure arrived at?
Simply looking at the approximate cost of what, they already have an existing window, so if the window were made wider and, you know, based on construction costs and discussing this with a contractor, we came into $3,000 figure. And, you know, if there was, if they would have come back to us and said, well, hey, you know, I think $5,000 would maybe get us a wider window and a skylight, or, you know, let's go out and have it bid, let's take a look at how much it is going to cost and what it would actually do for us, then we could have come to an agreement and mitigated it. But the fact of the matter was there was no correspondence from them to my client. So there was no way for us to mitigate the concern any further.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. We will now close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have any questions, comments, or entertain a motion? Everybody's quiet? I will make a comment that it seems that we're entertaining 70 square feet. Had this been under 100 square feet, we wouldn't be here tonight. So I'm struggling with this 70-square-feet that just kind of tips it over. I'm very sympathetic to the neighbors. Nobody likes to have any loss of sunlight or skyline, but on these downtown lots with, you know, 5-feet setbacks, it's really difficult to get the sunlight we'd like to see on the side of the properties. And as I walk through the downtown area and even through my own neighborhood, which are older homes, there are a lot of homes, it's not out of character for homes with these sides... sides setbacks being that they are, to be shaded and have a limited view of the skyline. So, I'm struggling with that. It's not out of character. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I agree with your comments. One of the things, I guess, that I would be concerned with is we're kind of presented with an up or down vote. And the unfortunate part of that is that some mitigation was offered, and I tend to believe the applicant saying they would have entertained some negotiation, but that was not done. So, if we decide this evening, for example, that the improvement should be made, that will, I guess, foreclose any offered mitigation because we have nothing to do with telling an applicant to pay money. So, that's, that makes it somewhat difficult, and I don't know how to get around that. But as far as your comment about, this particular addition is very small. And when you stand on the street in different locations, as I did today, there's only one place you can see it from. Now, I'm not talking about in the backyard of the neighbors, but I thought it was, the impact was negligible to the community at large, which is not to deny their problem. But I do tend to think if we're blocking the sunlight, it would be a different issue. Blocking the sky, I think, is not unusual. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comments, questions? Commissioner Hanson.
Relative to Commissioner O'Donnell's comment, are we able to make a recommendation that might include the, some kind of offer for the applicant to address the concern? Is that a possibility?
I believe that was not appropriate. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think that's correct. On the other hand, there is, I believe, something we could do, but I'm not saying we should do it. But were this matter continued? I think the handwriting is someone on the wall, and the parties are free to do whatever they want to do. So, that is a possibility. We're not, I don't think we're in any position to say somebody should pay money to otherwise exercise what perhaps is a right. And I'm not encouraging it, but it just seems unfortunate that the parties did not take the opportunity to have further conversation. So, I throw that out as not something we should do, but that is a possibility.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, I, seriously, with what's been said tonight, I totally agree. But if we were to do that, would it, because I, it sounded like the parties really didn't get a chance to get together and explore, you know, could we really put a bigger window in? Could it be a taller window? I mean, I don't know. I don't, it can't be a condition, but how would we encourage that?
Well, you may continue the matter and let the parties decide what to do.
Oh, and bring it back.
They do nothing, they do nothing. That's all.
That's a possibility.
But would that be if they're, we closed the public hearing, but would that be if they're agreeable? They might not be agreeable to that. Could we get a nod of the head, possibly?
Doesn't matter.
Well, you could reopen, I suppose. But all I'm trying to say is, we have to keep, I think, keep our hands out of money as a solution. But, well, I don't want to keep adding, but obviously, if the parties were, wanted to talk, and I suppose we could find out that, because if they did, then we could give them some time to talk. If one party said, no, I've been there, done that, I don't want to do it. But we can't find that out unless we were to reopen. I'm certainly, I'm prepared to go forward with this and just approve it. I'm only saying it would have, a better result for our standpoint if there was some mitigation merely between the neighbors. That's all.
Commissioner Talisfor?
So, you're saying that maybe perhaps the motion should be to continue the application to come back?
Well, I would be inclined, if the chair wanted to, to reopen for the sole purpose of asking if either of the parties would desire a continuance to look into this matter further.
That sounds reasonable. And I will be reopening the public portion of the hearing and calling Mr. Rockwood to the podium, if that's an option for you.
On behalf of the client, I think I would have to say no. And the reason why is, we already offered the mitigation. You know, we were the ones that were trying to, my client had to pay another $3,500 to go, to come before you tonight. So, we paid for the price of the residential application, okay? We had a neighbor who has opposed to it, which forced us to come before you and pay $3,500 to be able to come before you. We did everything we could to try to mitigate this. We met with the planning department, we tried to meet with the client, we offered mitigation, we did everything we could, and here we are, at our expense, in front of you, because they weren't willing to mitigate anything with us. So, I'd have to say no. We would prefer that you rule on this this evening. It was, it was sent for public noticing on February 21st. It's been two months since it was approved at the staff level.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marug. Out of fairness, I will be calling Mr., I'm sorry, that was Mr. Rockwood, Mr. Marug, back up to the podium to respond.
Yes, we would definitely entertain, excuse me, proposals from the architect. We have not met with the architect. We've had several meetings with the resident. We've had several, they've come to our home, of course, the staff came to our home. We've been very open about this and discussion. We've had many discussions with the applicants. Basically, the $3,000 was an offer to not have us come before you, and we thought it was most important for you to understand our situation.
Thank you. I will be closing the public portion of the hearing and ask...
I have a question for the speaker.
You may come back up to the podium, Mr. Marug. Commissioner Kane.
So, you're saying, sir, that there might be a point to the negotiations? Because if there's no point, then there's no point.
No, I think there is a point.
If you're open to other considerations, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? The public portion of the hearing is now closed. I will look to my commissioners to see if they have any comments, questions, or would like to entertain a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to say, having heard the applicant, I can fully understand their position. Whereas there was $3,000 on the table before, they've now spent $3,500 because their offer was not even entertained. It seems, seems what I had hoped for may have passed by, and I can understand that. So, I'll make a motion.
Please do so. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, we were, motion would be that we approve the minor residential application subject to the recommended conditions of approval. By in that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act as set forth in Exhibit 2, make the required findings as required by the residential design guidelines also specified in Exhibit 2, and the minor residential application with conditions contained in Exhibit 3.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kane?
I have the feeling Commissioner O'Donnell's motion may be successful. And I'm going to do something I've criticized other people for doing, which is I will not support the motion, only to make the gesture that we've had a day in court, and these folks have to live together. And they literally live next door to each other. The houses are very close. I was there. You should like each other. And so, that's why I'm not going to vote for it. It's, I don't want somebody to feel like they had a slam dunk. And I'm trying to mitigate the effect, I suppose. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor?
I wasn't going to say anything, but you spurred me on to say something. And I think the way I looked at this, I was hoping when I asked Mr. Marug if he had considered the, adding another window, and he basically said no. And then, I, so I feel like you, the train left the station and you didn't get on it. Now, the other thing is, is that I also think that perhaps, maybe you were not talking to the right parties, and that that's really too bad. And I feel, you know, I, I understand this, but there's not much that I feel like I can, I can't base a finding on that. But anyway, so I'll probably be supporting the motion.
Any other comments? I believe we're ready for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Kane? Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. We'll be moving on to new other business, which is item number two, consideration of the proposed five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years July 1st of 2015 to June 30th of 2020. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the program for consistency with the general plan and the hillside-specific plan? I see a nod of heads. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? None? Mr. Morley, I understand I'll be giving the staff report this evening.
I will. Thank you very much. Good evening. As was mentioned, California government code requires that a town that has an adopted general plan hear the capital improvement program for the fiscal year and make a finding and report to town council on the conformity of the program with the adopted general plan. With that, I'm going to highlight a few of the projects in our, in our capital improvement project over the coming year and try and connect those for you to, to the general plan. And certainly, available for questions at the end. Specific to the environment and sustainability element in the general plan, we have a couple projects there that connect nicely. We are proposing an LED streetlight program that would convert our town's current streetlights to an LED implementation. There's significant energy savings from that to the tune of about $50,000 in operating costs on an annual basis. That would be savings to the general fund. So, it's a very short payback period of about four years when, when we compare that across the cost of the project. Currently, the design standards for new developments include the use of LED streetlights, so it's nothing new for the town. It's certainly been experienced in other locations. Note that we are not adding, adding streetlights to the mix, simply replacing the existing streetlights. If you're looking for that project, it's on page C74 of the capital improvement program. We also are looking at additional energy efficiency projects, page E24, if you want to follow along. This will create ongoing funding, ongoing savings to the general fund. These range in size and scope from simple projects or equipment replacements that are needed over time to, to keep up with technology and make sense from an economical standpoint. We'll take these projects on as they come forward, but some examples might include lighting replacements, motion sensors, or similar improvements. Specific to the open space parks and recreation element of the general plan, we'll continue last year's efforts to dedicate dollars to park infrastructure with the idea of renewing our aging infrastructure. We're adding a park this year at Worcester, on page D18. Worcester Park is largely open space. There's not a whole lot of improvements there, but there is a trail that runs through the park that we've heard needs some improvements and on inspection concur. So, we'll do some improvements there to make that more accessible to, to the residents. In addition, we are partnering with, with Los Gatos Little League to replace the backstop at Blossom Hill Park. It's, an outdated backstop doesn't meet the current needs of Little League or the town. So, we're cost-sharing on that particular project on a 50/50 basis to make that improvement. And of course, the drought will play a significant role in the parks projects in the coming year, and we'll be bringing a drought item to the full council on May 5th for discussion at that point, and that will guide some of our direction. Specific to the transportation element of the general plan, we have several projects outlined. Some of the highlights include Almond Grove, which is on page C8, project long in the works. We are at the final stages of design now, working through the last bits of that, and we'll be coming back to Council for award prior to the end of the fiscal year. That would start construction on our current schedule over the summer on the first phase, Phase 1A, as we're calling it, and provide for construction by the end, by the end of, end of summer before winter in that particular neighborhood. We also have a series of sidewalk improvements and sidewalk infill projects. These projects will serve to meet the needs in some of the areas where we're missing sidewalks or have less than ideal conditions for pedestrians and other multimodal, multimodal transportation methods such as bicycles. These include crosswalk installations and the like. We, of course, focus our priority around the most exposed areas, generally school areas, and try and maximize the infill in those locations. And finally, in this particular element, we are doing a project at Winchester and Lark that will be paid through traffic mitigation fees for the addition, the improvements to that intersection, and addition of a receiving lane on Winchester that will tie in with Albright Development, the widening of the road that Albright will be conducting and transition into the wider pedestrian crossing that will be installed across Highway 85 on Winchester. And finally, in the community design element, we have begun a project this year for undergrounding of our, some of our PG&E or utility services, larger than PG&E, includes all of the utilities on the poles. We've identified a location from, on Los Gatos Boulevard from Lark to Chirico as our initial phase of that. PG&E collects on a regular basis, what are called Rule 28 funds. These funds are targeted for use in local jurisdiction for undergrounding of utilities. The project is led by PG&E, but with significant partnerships for the, from the local jurisdiction. We are allowed to accumulate those dollars over time, and it certainly takes a fair amount of those dollars to implement a project. So, we, we're at a point now where we can begin that, that work. The projects tend to take quite, quite a long time to develop, so we're looking at probably a seven-year cycle on this from, from the get-go, which is about now, as we work through the processes associated with that. Our next step is to meet with the associated utilities, and we'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks, to identify any significant hurdles on that particular stretch that we've, that we've identified for undergrounding and move forward. One key point on the Rule 28 funds is they have to be used in an area that is beneficial to the entire jurisdiction, so really precludes a smaller residential neighborhood and focuses on an arterial type of a use. And with that, that concludes my report, and certainly, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have two questions. One relates to the water, and I, you have the capital items before us tonight, but then you've also said that you're going to bring something to the council, I take it shortly, to deal as far as we can with the drought. So, I guess I'm kind of curious, I assume that those suggestions will cost money? So, where will that money come from? Just out of the general funds?
Yes. If there are capital improvements that the council desires associated with drought mitigation, those would be what we call general fund allocated reserve, which is our capital fund for projects. We do have several parks projects now that include capital dollars that could be allocated for that kind of work. In fact, we have an oak meadow allocation that is specifically for irrigation modifications at that particular park.
Okay. And then, the other question, maybe getting ahead of ourselves, but we have, you may know, have a desk item tonight, and we can come back to you after I hear some representations. But just to kind of catch up on this, one of the comments in the desk item was that your, your item as attached is the same as it's been for the last couple of years, notwithstanding the recent storm of interest. And I'm just wondering, what does that indicate if you have not changed the capital items over the last several years, notwithstanding this, what apparently looks like a serious question of asphalt versus concrete?
So, we've had the discussion on materials on that particular project at the, with the town council, and have direction from town council on where they'd like to see the project go. We're continuing to move forward in that direction. We'll review it again prior to, prior to award, certainly of a contract, and be able to review that discussion again at that level for discussion. We have done significant outreach, including meeting with, with members of the neighborhoods, polling to see what was a preference in those neighborhoods, and cost analysis for all, in an effort to provide... an effort to provide the best information possible for decision-makers.
Well, does that particular page then not assume a decision on concrete versus asphalt?
The council has given us direction to pursue concrete at this point, and they have not given us any direction for the pursuit of asphalt. Of course, the council is always welcome to change their mind and give us different direction, but at this point, we're pursuing a concrete option.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor.
And before we move to another subject and before the speaker comes up, I was curious as to, Massal was not included in the streets that I, that are, I consider Almond Grove. In fact, Massal to me is almost the, you know, the gateway street into the Almond Grove area. And the beginning of that street from Highway 9 to the stop sign at Bachman is very heavily traveled by trucks, by cars, by everybody, in any kind of a vehicle, and it's rather, it's cracking. I mean, it's deteriorating, I guess is a better word. Plus, it also has those, I don't know what you call them, those little triangles that are yellow so that the cars don't, you know, I don't know, go over them, which cars do all the time, and they're deteriorating as well. So my question, that's a long way for me to explain, why wasn't that part of Massal, or all of Massal, I know some of it's okay, included in this street program for the Almond Grove?
Yeah, so the larger Almond Grove project includes all of the concrete streets in the neighborhood. So those will all be replaced ultimately, although currently there is very limited funding, so we have just shy of $4 million that will not, at this point, fund the entire neighborhood reconstruction.
However, that street, just so heavily, I mean, I can't imagine that you would not reconsider, or may I suggest that you reconsider that part of the street, specifically from Highway 9 at least, to the stop sign at Bachman? Because there is so much construction happening between that area and clear, you know, past, way past Glenridge. So, you know, I would just like to have that reconsidered.
Understood. We'll bring those comments forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane.
Thank you for your report, and thanks to you and your staff for this remarkable document that kept me up half the night. I didn't see a total, you didn't? I didn't see a total number in here. Is it correct that it's around 25 million for the three components? 21 for streets, 1 for parks, and 2.8 for, what is that? It may not be our mission, but I think it's interesting to know, 25 million dollars. Where does that come from? How do we?
So our funds come from several locations. The large preponderance come from our general fund savings from previous years. So as the town stays within budget, those dollars are allocated to two priorities per the council. One is for capital projects, the other is to increase any reserves that we may need to bring back up to the approved level. Our reserves are currently fully funded, so the excess goes to our capital projects. The other funding sources include impact fees from various sources, including traffic mitigation fees, and grants or other solutions such as that.
I didn't mean so much assets on the books as I did revenue, income, and that's, and I was thinking that's mostly real estate and sales tax, and I think Commissioner Talisfor he said parking tickets? Is that accurate?
I probably wouldn't group parking tickets into that, but yes, that is correct.
But the first two are where the money comes from?
Yes, they are.
Now, on the Little League program, we found a partner. And so we've budgeted $50,000, and they've offered $25,000. So if it's a $50,000 project, which would be a heck of a backstop, they put in 25, we put in 25. Do we have, or do we seek, other such partnerships when there's clear mutual benefit?
We do pursue partnerships, and that was a main reason that the Little League backstop was brought forward, was because they were so willing to partner with us to make that a reality.
I was thinking specifically of the old library. It's an enormous facility, and that has been gifted to the museums, and to whom else?
To the friends of the library.
Friends of the library. So giving them that asset, that property is one thing, but in this budget, there are a number of allocations for substantial repairs and maintenance. Do we get any assistance from either of those other two entities to help pay the bill?
The town, at the direction of the council, is significantly invested in the success of those individual organizations and has made a significant contribution to them, to be able to house them here at the civic center. You could argue that a significant amount of that, those improvements would be needed, regardless of the use, so even if it was town staff, you would have some use there. And those organizations are doing some of the tenant improvements themselves, so it's not fully funded by the town. They are participating to some extent. They will also pay their share of operating costs, for instance, utility costs associated with their spaces. But indeed, the town is making a significant investment in those spaces to make them vibrant and successful for those organizations.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I had a few questions, and thank you also for the document. It is very thorough, and there was a lot of information here. I was trying to kind of put this together in my mind, like having worked on the general plan, and kind of bridge the gap of how things get from the general plan to this. So maybe, that was one question I wanted to ask, and I realize this is probably because I'm new to the Planning Commission, but I was just curious how, you know, what the process is of taking the goals and policies in the general plan to get to here? That was one question. I have other questions, too.
Certainly. We review the general plan as we're creating our capital improvement program on an ongoing basis and look for opportunities to address projects that are identified in the general plan through the capital improvement program. So we do have, as I highlighted, several projects now, and will continue to look for opportunities to weave those into our capital improvement program.
If you had to, I'm not asking you to do it. If you had to, take, say, put a little chart next to every one of these and say what goal it tied to in the general plan or policy, you could do that.
Yes, not every capital project's going to tie directly. For instance, we have a capital project to do aerial photography that would provide digital aerial photographs of the town at a high, super-high resolution that we use for development, and doesn't really directly tie to a general plan item, but certainly facilitates a wide variety of them.
Well, it could. I mean, we have things about the town image and, you know, in our presentation and things like that, but, okay. I was just looking for that kind of research, because I mean, that's what we're being asked to do, is say that this complies with the general plan, and so then I kind of wondered, I was like, well, it would, and I'm not asking you to do it, I mean, I was trying to, in my mind, go, well, what part of the general plan? So that's one question. The second question was about the different parts of this thing. At what point, if any, do, say, the transportation parts of this and the parks and trails parts of this go to the commissions? Is that later, or has it already happened?
That is an ongoing process. So at the regular meetings of all of the commissions, the parks and public work staffs, we bring our capital project update, so how are we progressing on our capital projects, and provide them an update at those meetings, whether they be the monthly or bimonthly meetings of that particular commission. In addition, as we reach the end of the calendar year, we agendize an item for identifying the next program, next cycle year's fiscal year's worth of capital projects, so that they have an opportunity, not only to hear an update of where we're at on our current projects, but an opportunity to provide input into not only what staff's thinking, but what they're thinking in terms of what additional capital projects might be.
Okay, so it's not a specific, like, once a year thing when this is presented, it's an ongoing thing where you're going over this with the commission?
That's correct.
So this document should in fact reflect the priorities of some of the commissions that are involved with this?
Absolutely. We actively seek their input.
On that point, I was really glad to, for example, to see, since I've been going to the St. Francis School, meaning the, putting some sidewalks in on Shannon, you know, because that was one of their hotspots that entailed a capital improvement versus something from the police department. And then it made me wonder about other partnering opportunities, just for example, on the Hillside proposal that was made at council last night, and it was also in here to make some improvements on Shannon Road. I know that, you know, from my past experience, that Shannon Road is one of those roads that's partly owned by the town and partly owned, and so I wondered if, and maybe it's not appropriate for this document, but I wondered, like, if we're going to go make Shannon Road all nice and up to Seaview, is there a way to talk to Santa Clara County, and maybe it isn't in here, but, you know, that they're, hopefully convince them to do something parallel, because at the end of the day, it's all in Los Gatos, right, even if we don't own it?
I agree with you on that. I can't say for sure whether we've actually reached out to the county this year. We do work with them on a routine basis, and in fact, have done partner projects, for instance, with the City of San Jose on Blossom Hill, where that road is half-owned by the town and half-owned by the City of San Jose, and we partner with them to do the improvements at once. The county has a large number of rural roads and tends to be not as flexible as others in how they can spend their money. But we do look for those opportunities as we can. The other area that is significant is in our partnership with our utility companies, and we reach out with them, and San Jose Water is a great example, where we coordinate our capital projects so that we're not repaving a road and having them come through and dig it up the next week.
Okay. There was the one, so that project on Shannon was partly funded by OBAG. Can you identify what part of OBAG that's coming from? Is that the non-competitive part of the funding that we always get, or did we apply for a grant?
That is the non-competitive element that we're receiving there.
So how did we decide that it needed to go there? I'm just curious.
The dollars are used for street resurfacing. It was, that particular stretch of road was applicable to the requirements of the grant, and so we selected that as the opportunity. It also fit nicely with, from a timing perspective and a broad effect, because Shannon gets so much use.
Agreed. Okay. And then I wondered, going back to the whole school discussion, and when we were talking about the green bike lanes and everything, one intersection that I didn't see listed unfunded or unfunded that I think has a lot of opportunity for improvements towards a more complete streets, bike and pedestrian-friendly, would be the intersection of Blossom Hill and Los Gatos Boulevard, because it's, number one, situated right by our, you know, newest mixed-use development, as well as three schools. And so I wondered if, why that wasn't on the radar screen.
So from a traffic perspective, from a vehicular traffic perspective, that intersection functions well, according to town standards. From a multimodal perspective, we looked long and hard at that intersection when we were doing the green bike lane pilot. Certainly, it would have been an ideal intersection. However, with the funds that we had, we had $100,000 allocated for green bike lanes. It would have, the reconstruction necessary to make bike lanes fit at that intersection would have eaten up the entire pot of money, and then some, we would have had to move islands and move some signal poles to make that happen at that particular location. So certainly, it's on the radar and a big connection point from my perspective, Blossom Hill to Blossom Hill School, and a big intersection that could use some help.
Well, I just was wondering, because I noticed there was a project to put additional sidewalk over at Santa Cruz in Blossom Hill, and then, and I understand there was no sidewalk at all on the north side, I think, so then it made me think of the Blossom Hill, Los Gatos thing, and I would feel better if I saw it under, unfunded, even if it, you know, just that it was on the radar screen for when we get enough money.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
One of the things we do, I guess, in reviewing this and making motion about it, is determine that it satisfies the general plan. And one of the things, that's kind of an amorphous thing, but on the streets program at C8, et cetera, the town has made a decision that the scope of the streets that we would have to address exceed the amount of money available. And in particular, when we come to the items discussed in C9, that's inherent in a decision that we should spend X dollars on concrete versus what I think might be X plus Y dollars on asphalt, but I don't know that. One of the comments that I think we're going to hear tonight is that it isn't simply a matter of asphalting, because if you're asphalting on top of cracked concrete, maybe it isn't so easy to do. But I'm just wondering, in coming up with this budget and determining that the limited amount of money we have would be better spent on a more limited number of streets, I assume that's economically based? In other words, inherent in that is that asphalt would somehow not be cheaper than concrete because of the conditions of those streets. Is that correct?
So we provided a pretty detailed report to council on the costs of both, sort of engineer estimate costs of both asphalt and concrete. The asphalt solution is somewhat cheaper than the concrete solution. We can do an overlay on the concrete with asphalt. There is a solution that works for that. We brought those discussions forward to council and have received some clear direction on which direction to move at this particular point.
Well, can you give me an approximation? I'm trying to get a feel for that, because whatever the council decided, we're supposed to decide whether this, I assume, maximizes the general plan's goals. So if it's a marginal difference between concrete and asphalt, probably doesn't make any difference. If, on the other hand, let's say 20% more of the roads could be improved with asphalt, that probably does make a difference. Can you give me any sense of the difference between asphalt and concrete insofar as the amount of the roads we could take care of?
So we've gone round and round with the numbers, and a large amount of it depends on when, what the cost of oil is at that particular time. So oil is cheap now, so the cost savings would be increased quite a bit at this point. We would expect at this point, maybe in the 15% range for savings on asphalt over concrete. However, we haven't priced either of those out in a competitive market, and that would be the ultimate determining factor. In order to move from where we're at today in design to asphalt design, it would require some additional expenses with our design consultant to reach that point, and we're not funded for that particular effort at this point.
So this particular capital item essentially does not take into consideration the cost savings so that more of the streets could be covered.
An additional element is the historic nature of the Almond Grove District, and the resolutions that establish the historic district require the roads be, have the appearance of concrete at the particular date that the historic district was established. So there is some limitation in terms of not only the material, but the aesthetic element of the historic district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. I'm going to open the public portion of the public hearing, because I believe we have one speaker, and it's involving the Almond Grove project that we've been spending a lot of time on. We will call you back up later, Mr. Morley. Thank you. I'm now calling Angelia Dornar. You'll have three minutes.
It's as easy as just pushing a button, so I'm going to let you do it. It is, just as easy. Thank you. Hello, I'm Angelia Dornar, a very proud resident of the Almond Grove, and I only have a few comments this evening in addition to what I had given you before. And I do look forward at the end, if Mr. O'Donnell and Ms. Talisfor would love to ask me questions, I can provide a little bit more detail than what is allowed in my three minutes. But you're absolutely right. If you haven't visited the Almond Grove recently, next weekend is the Cats Hill Classic. Please come on down to the Almond Grove. It's a great family event. It's a wonderful cyclist race. People come from all over the world. People come from all over the world for this thing, and it's all throughout the Almond Grove, up Cats Hill and around Bachman Park, et cetera. It'll give you an opportunity to walk on these streets, walk on these sidewalks again. It may be a little bit of time since you've done that, and that might give you more perspective and feel for what we, the neighbors, are dealing with with this project. You're absolutely right in that only three streets, which doesn't show up very good here, but only three streets are targeted to be used with this $4 million, which is Broadway, which is not in the Almond Grove, and also Bachman and Tate. The rest of these streets will not be done. The pictures that I'm showing you here are from Bean, Nicholson, and Wilder. They are in much worse condition than even Massal. These streets are not going to be funded at all, nothing improved, for a minimum of five years, as it shows in front of you, and some people are saying it won't be funded for another 10. So the neighbors, the neighborhood from the get-go, when they heard $4 million was being spent, was looking for opportunities to how effectively can we use this $4 million to get more done of what's mostly necessary to be done? And unfortunately, we just keep getting these three streets, and I think I have an idea as to why that's happening. They are narrowing our streets, which is requiring an awful lot of additional work. This is a slide from a PPW presentation to the town council. They're showing why trees in narrow strips are ripping up our sidewalks and streets. These three pictures, ironically, the two on your left are the same tree. It's at the top of Broadway. They're just taken from different perspectives. That is the only broken curb and sidewalk on all of Broadway. It's at the top of Main. The other is on Wilder, and Wilder's not being fixed. But what is being done is they're narrowing our streets. What does that require? Requires to take out all the curbs, whether they need to be done or not. They're also taking out all of the sidewalks, whether they need to be done or not. The only thing that I can come up with is that they're trying to maximize getting rid of impervious materials from a sustainability standpoint, and there goes my time already.
Your time is up. Thank you. All right. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Ms. Dornar?
I do.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm sure others will ask other questions, but let me just start by saying, I looked briefly at your multi-page report this evening, and it wasn't clear to me where you came out on concrete versus asphalt, because it was like, on the one hand, there's this, and on the other hand, there's that. Do you have an opinion on what the town should be doing?
I absolutely do have an opinion. There were three, actually, three alternatives, if you want to look at this. Go down to the dirt and redo it in concrete. Go down to the dirt and redo it in asphalt. And then do what is called overlay, which is to put asphalt on top of concrete. However, the biggest issue with that alternative is that if a slab is shattered, then the asphalt will not work on that shattered slab. So you have to take out a shattered slab, replace the slab with concrete, and then cover it over with asphalt. The only two options that were presented or recommended by PPW to the town council was go down to the dirt with concrete and do the overlay. They didn't say go down to the dirt and do concrete, or go down to the dirt and do asphalt. These would be apples to apples. You would truly have a cost comparison, and there are no differences in the specifications required between these two alternatives. In order to get that alternative, the overlay, you do need to have someone figure out how many of the slabs have to be replaced and taken out and repoured and then covered up, and what other work has to be done so that you don't end up with the composite streets, which is what Pennsylvania, part of Glen Ridge, Royce, all of those were done that way. They had asphalt poured over the top of the old concrete. Didn't last, didn't work, and they ended up having to be totally ripped up anyway and asphalted.
So your point is not that you favor one over the other. Your point is there's not enough information to be able to compare one versus the other.
At this point, there is not enough information that has been provided to council or by PPW. I personally have done a lot of research and have tried to share that with a lot of different people in the town. And my personal preference is to see how far our money can go, because going another five years with what we have is really unacceptable, even though the cement is the light color that everybody likes.
But your personal preference doesn't involve the information you say you need? That is to say, how much of the concrete can actually be overpoured with asphalt until you do further studies?
I'm sorry?
Well, you're saying you can't put asphalt on some of the concrete because it's shattered, right? But somebody would have to analyze that and find out what percentage of the concrete would have to be removed, put asphalt, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you don't know the answer to that.
I would not spend any time even considering that option, because it's just not an effective option. If you're gonna go, just go down to the dirt and put down asphalt.
That's, well...
Get rid of the concrete, get rid of all of it.
So then the only difference is the cost per yard of concrete versus the cost per yard of asphalt, but not the preparation work?
The preparation work would not be any different. In addition, you would also have the cost of time, the curing time with the concrete, the curing, the time compared to asphalt. You're talking probably three to four days with the asphalt being poured compared to seven to two weeks of the concrete, and you're talking that that's the amount of time that people won't have access to their driveways. There's a lot of incendiary consequences to that as well.
Is it fair to say, if the costs were identical, you would be in favor of asphalt?
If the costs were identical, personally, I would do asphalt, because I think it's easier to maintain in the long run. Concrete will crack sooner or later, and as soon as it is compromised in any way, as far as cutting in a square to do any repairs or anything else, it will be compromised and it will crack.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So I'm looking at your exhibit number two, and there's a statement in there that's pretty strong, and it talks about that Public Works is trying to balance competing goals, and unfortunately, they are using and abusing the Almond Grove project to encompass other hidden agendas. So when you talk about hidden agendas, can you elaborate on that?
I sure can. Thank you so much. This was my last slide that I just put together this afternoon, and this is what I refer to. Narrowing the streets, for your information, Tate is going to be narrowed four feet. That is the width of a normal bicycle lane. Why would we be narrowing our streets so significantly? And this question has been asked ever since October of 13, when they came up with this idea, and they say, to save the trees. Well, we're gonna increase the planter strips. So initially, they said, we're gonna increase the planter strips six feet. Everybody went bonkers on that, okay? Now they came back and said, well, we're going to increase the planter strips up to four feet, unless that makes the road less than 36 feet wide, then we'll do less. So it still makes no sense. What strips are four feet? Look at all of the trees in Santa Cruz, et cetera. It's just that wrong trees have been put into these strips in some areas. The competing goals that I'm referring to, I believe, all come down to sustainability. Narrowing the streets, four feet on Tate, one foot on each side of Broadway, six inches on each side of Bachman. Come on. What are we doing this for? Six inches? Just by doing that and having that additional space in the strips gets rid of that much impervious material, which used to be concrete, or if it was asphalt, used to be asphalt. You get that out of the way. That's not historical, because our streets are no longer wide. That's not bicycle safety or pedestrian safety, which is what we have now. Bicyclists will be dored like crazy. The dollars to redo the curbs and the sidewalks and everything that doesn't need to be done, just the cost of those curbs, I've measured them, and I'm using the prices that came from bids that were received on April 10th for some of the same work. That in itself will be $650,000, because we're gonna rip out all the curbs in order to narrow those streets. I call that competing goals. Removing all the hardscape, any kind of pavers or anybody, anything at all that someone has put into that strip, even if it's just a two-foot thing to walk from the sidewalk up to their front gate, that's being ripped out as well. All hardscape is gone. That would be livable if you could at least have a little path to your front gate where you weren't walking on mulch and on dirt. They're going to be removing a ton of established trees and planting non-invasive trees, which is wonderful, but all brand-new trees. Just between Bachman and Broadway, there's gonna be over 60 brand-new trees that are gonna be planted. That would be wonderful if it wasn't a drought year, you know? It's gonna be guzzling water. So I just, you know, I'm trying to figure out, all of the neighborhoods trying to figure out, why are we doing some of these things when it's only coming down to three streets? How much further can that $4 million go if we only use it on places that are necessary? One of the ideas, you talked about Massal, that was brought up in October 13. Do that part of Massal. Do the intersections. That's where most of the slabs get shattered because of the turning and everything on that. Wilder, one block of it is horrible, but we could live with the other half of that block not being done. Broadway is horrible down by Santa Cruz, but once you get up past the worst part of the commercial area around the church, it's not that bad all the way up, and then you turn on Main and you're on asphalt. So, you know, there's just a lot of opportunities, we believe, that could make this $4 million go an awful lot further, and it just, a lot of it just doesn't make any sense, especially with the narrowing of the streets and having to rip everything out that doesn't need it.
Commissioner Hanson?
So in glancing at your presentation, it sounded like one of the issues you had is that there hasn't been enough community outreach to discuss the design proposal. Is that, would that be correct?
I started my talks with the council in October of this past year, and since then, there has been a better attempt for community outreach. They had two meetings, one in October and one in November. Unfortunately, when it comes to the information that's been provided, as well as the information provided to council, it's not anything that you can, on the surface, work with to make any other kind of a educated decision.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just struggling with like how to, how to help you.
For instance, they say minor narrowing. I mean, all they have is a memo. The HPC has only been given a memo, and they said narrow, minor narrowing. I don't think taking four feet out of a street is called minor. So the neighbors heard minor at the last two outreach meetings, which were, they were repeat meetings, but so let's call it one. They heard minor. They didn't hear four feet. That's a big difference. So it's not, I would say that it is incomplete information. I don't want to say that we've been lied to, but I do want to say that part of it is part of information by omission or misrepresentation by omission.
So looking at the matter that's at hand in the planning commission tonight, we're being asked to decide whether or not the capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan, and all it says in here, this document here, is that there's so much money that going to Almond Grove. And so I'm, relative to your concerns, like, if you could have your concerns addressed the way you want, what would the town do to, would they give you more information? Would they change the plan? Like, how would you see that working?
My suggestion was that the most serious thing I see is that every significant project, $4 million is a lot of money. It's a lot of money. And I don't see anyone from the council who has been involved, actively involved, like an advisory committee. Why don't we have an advisory committee, two of you, or one of you and one from the council, to participate and who understand the general plan, who understand land use, who understand all of the other things that we're trying to do in town? And just walk with a couple residents through the neighborhoods and say, if I had to redtag a couple of slabs or a couple of intersections, this is, I would redtag that, redtag that, redtag that, and leave that alone, leave that alone, and see what we have, and say, what can we do with the $4 million? And I'll guarantee you, we'll have money left over.
Well, it sounds like if we had some kind of community input similar to, like, when we, I was on the general plan advisory committee, and so when we were trying to decide on, like, what the priorities were, there was, at the community meeting, there was like options, these different options, and then people could give input on, you know, what was the best. And so it sounds to me like that, something like that is what you're looking for, you know, kind of a more engaging dialogue.
Yeah, there has been none of that, really. From the start, first, I do want to say that this all got started before Mr. Morley came on board, okay? I mean, I have recognized that from the start, and I have said that all along, and the same with Lisa Peterson. However, starting from the very first meeting in October of 13, we were just told, this is the way it's gonna be. And we were told, it will be concrete because the town council says it will be concrete, and it will be this and it will be that. And I mean, it's pretty much been that approach. I tried to, I went to PPW and said, could I at least see all the comic cards that came in from that meeting? Because at the following meeting, none of those things were addressed. All the things that people brought up, great ideas, wonderful ideas, traffic studies, all different things. The cards were just rubber-banded together in a manila folder. They couldn't even find them, you know? So I think a walk around the block with a couple of people in the know would really just get this thing back on track.
Okay. Thank you. Did that answer your question? Any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. Just to follow up on that, to give the town maybe a little heads-up, is, how active are the residents in this area? I mean, I've seen you at a couple of meetings, but are there, are you the only voice? I mean, is there other?
I have 71 emails of people who are very interested and want to know what's going on. I don't believe there are people that have a lot of confidence or trust in the process, not just from this project, from others. And they basically say, they told me that I was wasting my time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? You may sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will invite Mr. Morley back up to the podium. I do have a question for you.
Certainly.
And that is, Ms. Dornar was talking about four feet of the street, that it's more than just minor. So what is the width of the streets in that neighborhood? They look wide to me than the average street.
The streets vary in width. Some of them are fairly narrow and some of them are extremely wide. And we have, as Ms. Dornar represented, have tried to maintain the width. There are some streets where the width is changing to accommodate. One of the other important aspects of the Almond Grove area, which is the tree canopy that makes that such a desirable, part of which makes that such a desirable neighborhood. So we are widening streets up to, and I'm not sure of the exact dimensions, but up to probably four feet on Tate, where it's a fairly wide street. Other streets are not getting widened at all. Certainly, the widening of the streets, the narrowing of the streets does not change the costs at all, because we're removing the curb and gutter. The curb and gutter need to come out anyways. It's not something that can withstand a rework of the streets. It's substandard curb and gutter because of the age of the infrastructure. I would like to point out that one of your goals is to align the capital program with the general plan. Goal TRA-2 of the general plan is to create and maintain a safe, efficient, and well-designed roadway network. So if you're looking for synergy or connection there, that would be good for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to the four feet. When you say four feet, is that four feet total or four feet on each side?
Four feet total width.
Four feet total width. So Tate is a very busy street with bicycles and cars, but the other thing that is, makes that street important to the residents that live there is that that's sometimes their garages. That is their parking places. They don't have garages. So I'm thinking that that four feet... So I'm thinking that that four feet, two feet on each side, to narrow that is going to, I think it might, I think we need to consider that as not maybe being the...
So the, one of the primary concerns was maintaining a street width that is adequate for two-way traffic and for parking on both curbsides, and that does that.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
This, I think, is irrelevant, but that won't be the first thing I've said that's irrelevant. I just want to say that I drive on Tate every morning, and many mornings I have to pull to the side of the road to let cars go by. Now, if you take four feet away, I guess I can drive up to somebody's driveway, but it's really tight in there. And if this, if the garbage folks are coming out, there's just nothing you can do. You just back up and go another road. So if they're going to take four feet away from Tate, which is right by St. Mary's, which gets fairly heavily trafficked, I'm just amazed at that. And I don't expect a response, but you can give one if you want to, because I do think what I just said is irrelevant.
I think Tate's a good example of a street that changes in dimension through the length of the street and where it's broader in certain locations and narrow in others. Certainly, our goal is to retain, as I said, two-way traffic with parking on either side. So where, where that is challenged already, we would not be narrowing the street, including on Tate.
Well, then, let me suggest you take a look at that block between St. Mary's, straight on down. So, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, I apologize if this is an unfair question from the beginning, but, and I'm looking for an order of the magnitude, not precision. If you were going to address all of the street and sidewalk issues in the Almond Grove area and in the Broadway neighborhood, that total number is?
I'll know more once we bid the first cycle. 10 million, perhaps, would be a round number for you.
So the, so the, so the funding in place now would fund about 40% of the total work, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Erickson?
The work being done, does it represent? I was trying to figure out how to ask this question. It represents 40, 40% of the cost. Does it represent what percentage of the work are, I'm trying to figure out how to ask the question, Matt, another way. In other words, I could spend 10% of the money, or 40% of the money, to achieve 10% of the goals, because some things are more expensive than other things to accomplish them. So, so do you have a sense of the 40% that's available now? I get that it would be easy, make your job a lot easier if the, if Steve Conway came to your office tomorrow and said, you know, the council just told me to write you a check for $6 million more. That's likely not to happen. But, but how much of what needs to be done, in your judgment, gets done by this 40% of the funding? I mean, of the goals, of the 100% of the goals that need to be addressed?
All of the identified streets in Almond Grove are in significant need of reconstruction, not just repair reconstruction. So I think we've, we've identified the full matrix of, of streets. There's been others in past years in the surrounding neighborhoods that have been redone with asphalt. There are even additional concrete streets, for instance, north Santa Cruz, north of Highway 9 was concrete with an asphalt overlay. So there are, there are solutions that, that have taken place throughout the town. But the Almond Grove and Broadway areas that we've identified are, are in need of reconstruction.
Commissioner Hanson?
I don't, I don't know if this number resonated at all with you, but when I was chairing the Transportation and Parking Commission, this is when this project first came up. And what I, what I recall was the total project to fix everything was going to be like, something like $15 million. I'm not positive of that, but that's what I heard. So getting back to the issue at hand, then, you know, and, and that, that, that number was at the time, and probably, and I think still is, was such a huge number relative to the possible amounts that we could, you know, raise to, for capital improvements in any given year, you know, that it would take many, many, many years. So, so then it get, getting back to the $4 million, I guess the question at hand is sort of, you know, are we spending the, the 30% or 40% or whatever the percent of the total in the best, in the best way? And it sounds like, you know, there's been, there's a, there's a proposal on the table for that, but maybe not ever been, agrees with it.
Yeah. I think the, the process has been an in-depth process. We've, we've rolled preliminary design drawings out across the back wall there and walked through them with individual neighbors on a property-by-property basis. We've put door hangers on the properties, on the, on the, on individual doors to alert neighbors of, of meetings. We've done, done multiple community meetings, including one-on-ones to talk about everything from the most trips to the street trees with individuals to see how it would affect them directly. So the, the outreach has been significant, and I would say that the characterization, characterization that there are, there is a split is probably accurate. The polling that we did showed a 60/40 split for a preference of, of concrete. And certainly, there's vocal, vocal folks on, on both sides of that. We're doing what we can to provide all of the information that we can possibly provide, not only to the, to the neighborhood, but to the council, so that they can have that during the decision-making processes.
Well, did the outreach, I, I heard that there was all this outreach, and so like the nature of that reach, did it include like, should we focus on this street versus this street? Or was it concrete or asphalt or like, or was it both or, you know, or more than that?
So the, it's been an iterative process, and some of it occurred prior to my time with the town. The discussion has certainly been, while I've, while I've been here, on the option of asphalt versus concrete. And we, that's, the result of that was a poll to figure out what the, what the neighborhood would prefer. The, the initial direction to pursue concrete was made some time ago by, by council, and I think even prior to that, when the ordinances for the historic districts were set.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
There was a statement by the speaker that apparently, since she's been involved, it's always been, we're going to use concrete because we're going to use concrete. And so I'm kind of wondering, in doing the numbers, which you set forth in C9, those numbers are solely dependent upon using concrete, right? Did we ever do an in-depth study of what it would cost to use asphalt as, as necessary? In other words, what I'm saying is, you may have to go down to dirt sometimes and not other times. You may be overlaying sometimes. Did you ever do an in-depth study of how much it would cost to stack the, the concrete, which you've got numbers on, versus the asphalt?
So we've done engineers' estimates to, to compare a complete concrete reconstruction with a complete asphalt reconstruction. Now, keep in mind with an asphalt reconstruction that the curb and gutter and the sidewalk will still be concrete. So there's still a concrete element associated with it, so you don't get a full, full savings as, on sort of a per-ton savings of concrete over asphalt. We recently brought the option back to council to, to consider looking at an additional option, additional design option of doing an asphalt overlay, and council wasn't ready to pursue that.
What was, what were the comparison numbers, then?
That was the, the, and again, these numbers were run, the comparison was run when oil prices were somewhat higher, but that was the 15% savings on asphalt over concrete.
So today, it would be more than 15%?
It would be, I would expect, in the 15, 20% range.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kane?
I'm prepared to make a motion that the capital improvements program, the CIP, is consistent with the general plan and Hillside plan, and that the commission should forward a recommendation of approval to town council for the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2020.
So I'll second the motion with a couple of comments. I agree with the maker of the motion that it's consistent with the general plan, the Hillside plan. I would also like to say, I find it very responsive to issues which have come before the Planning Commission over the last two, three, four years, and, and also issues which are, have been brought forward by parents in the school districts. So I think it's very responsive in terms of choices that are made. Choices are always difficult to make when one doesn't have full funding for all of the things, and that rarely happens in a capital project. So I think in addition to being consistent with the general plan, the Hillside's plan, that is very responsive.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm debating whether I'll support the motion or not. Were I making the motion, I suppose what I would have said would be that, as proposed, it does all, all the good things that both of you've said, with the exception of the proposal on Streets, Streets Program. Because I don't, I do believe our duty is not to simply say, is there something in the general plan that is, one can argue is consistent with it? If you believe that what is in the, the capital budget is not done correctly or completely, then you're implicitly approving something that you either don't have enough information on or that you disagree with. And as near as I can tell, the proposal now outlined on C9 is maybe 20%, it's going to accomplish 20% less than if they used asphalt. And I find it very hard for, to sit here and say, oh, good, let's, this is a wonderful thing they're doing. They're going to get 20% less bang for their buck. And therefore, I can support everything else, but I can't support the Streets Program. And I think it's, well, that's it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. I can support the capital improvement program as it, I think, you know, it hits all the topics that are in the general plan. However, is, I think that we need to maybe send it on with some type of considerations. And, and I would add, maybe going along with Commissioner O'Donnell, is that I think that this Streets Program somehow needs to be revisited. It seems, it just doesn't seem like it's complete enough for me, anyway, of that, you know, that we haven't considered enough of those streets. I mean, seeing, I mean, I drive those streets, but seeing them in photographs on Bean and Wilder, there are some really huge issues there. Hearing that you're going to, you know, I think, I really would like to have more reasoning behind taking four feet off of Tate. I mean, one of the things about that street is that it is wide, because that was historic. Anyway, so I, I just don't think that this has been vetted, ferreted out, vetted enough. I don't know if it means you have to do more consideration of that, but that's what I would, that's my comment. And I will support the, the improvement program just because it does, you know, it hits all the headings of the general plan, but it goes with those comments for me.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Kane?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments of the commissioners. Regarding the money spent, the project identified on C9, I watched two lengthy town council meetings regarding asphalt versus concrete and feel that's been vetted adequately. And it goes to, you know, council discussed it back and forth. There was great input from the neighborhoods. They made a decision, staff supported it. So that's why I made the motion that I did. Now, if council watches this tape or reads these minutes, they'll pick up the concern that we have that that item maybe should be revisited.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I, I concur with Commissioner Kane. It seemed like to me that that particular issue has been vetted. My sense from having watched both of those is that a consideration, and I apologize to the council if I, if I'm attributing something to them that they don't attribute, that redoing the streets from asphalt, from concrete to asphalt would change, in their judgment, the character of the historic neighborhood. So they, I believe, part of the, and, and at least that's where I would also fall, that, that changing, that would change the character of the neighborhood. So while there is, while I would always want to be sensitive to the cost difference, one in capital projects needs to look way down the road, in a long way. So I would do that. I have one other comment for Mr. Morley. I think, this is a suggestion. I think with a, with a situation like the Almond Grove paving situation, I think your interest might be served, if you could figure out a way with Mr. Conway and others, to reflect the full cost. So while I understand you have to practically break it down in a five-year period of time, but to reflect in the record the estimated full cost of it, while you might not even have a source of funding, so that people understand that you're seeing it in the whole, but you're, but you only have funding, or you're recommending funding for a period of time, that would, I think, allay people's concerns. It also might help, it might fuel rumors about it getting done sooner than it otherwise get done, but that's okay. I mean, you could manage that kind of thing. So I think sometimes, while this is obviously not a discreet, in itself a discreet project, it's part of a larger whole, it might be helpful to have that reflected.
We're, we're hearing several comments, I think, from the commission, and we'll, we'll certainly take, take heed of those and, and package them for our next appearance before the council and be able to discuss them as a whole with the council. And Commissioner Erickson, you brought up Mr. Conway and the work there. Attributor, the, the preponderance of the work on the capital project to Mr. Conway and his amazing staff, and certainly a bunch of work amongst that and the operating budget that they deserve credit for.
Let me, I'll just make one quick comment, and then I'll call on you. I'm going to concur with the reasoning provided by Commissioner Kane and Commissioner Erickson, so I will be supporting the motion. And Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
I just wanted to make the comment that I also will support the motion, because as, as it stands right now, this is really about whether the plan, the capital improvement plan is consistent with the general plan. And the general plan's pretty general, not specific about concrete or asphalt or anything like that. But having heard all these concerns, I, I don't have a problem with the motion, I would support it. But I, I, it does seem to me that since this, this Almond Grove project is the single largest single project that we have had, that there's some ongoing need for community input and involvement on every step of the way, and, and I hope that will continue.
Absolutely.
Any further comments? Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner O'Donnell passes. Thank you, Mr. Morley. We are moving on to...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
What, I'm sorry, what was the vote?
It was five in favor with Commissioner O'Donnell opposed, the single vote opposed.
I'm sorry. I thought I saw another hand go up. I just wanted to be short.
Thank you. All right. So we're moving on to the report from the Director of Community Development, Ms. Pravetti. Or Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us?
And I just wanted to offer that as Ms. Pravetti's doing the director's report, I'll be passing out two items that Mr. Shepherdson asked that they be passed out to the commission.
Thank you. I have several items to report from last night's town council meeting. First of all, the council heard an appeal for 12, 240 El Cajon. This was the house that wanted to do the second story in the Garden Hill neighborhood. The council gave kudos to the Planning Commission. They felt that the Planning Commission did the right thing in its analysis. A week before the town council member meeting, the applicant and appellant had submitted revised plans that reduced the height of the structure, reduced the FAR, took out the cellar, took out the attic. And so because of the changes that had been made, the council felt that the revised project did fit the neighborhood, and they approved it five to zero. But they did acknowledge that you did your job well, and they gave you kudos. In addition, they considered the use permit for Holts. They wanted to do the outdoor patio, as you recall. Again, lots of great comments regarding the work of the Planning Commission. They really liked the questions and dialogue that you had with the applicant, and that you were clearly listening and trying to work through the issues. They did approve the patio. The hours, they agreed would essentially align with the hours of the restaurant itself. So a slight change... So a slight change, but again, a strong recognition of your work. In addition, the council approved the updated planning commission procedures and policies. So those are now being distributed. They are now in effect. And so they are for your review and comment. As you recall, you agreed to no ex parte communication, so that is represented in the document. And our town attorney is here, if you have additional questions, or he may wish to elaborate.
The only other issue that they took up was the issue of the appellate's time and the rebuttal time. And if you remember, you wanted to keep it at five and three minutes, but they voted to have continuity between the planning commission and council. So your applicant-appellant will get 10 minutes, and rebuttal will be five minutes, starting at the next meeting.
And finally, the council also heard and made appointments to boards and commissions and committees. And so the Plan Development Zoning Study Committee is now seated with the General Plan Committee, plus four additional members, two residents, one business person, and one person with development experience. The other four individuals include Lee Quintana, Jack Van Ada, Jeffrey Barnett, and Jim Foley. So that committee is now complete, but given the status of our current housing element and other work priorities, we don't expect that committee to get going until the summer at the earliest. And that concludes our report.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Question about that placement on the general plan of the ad hoc people, is that, will they meet continually with the general plan, or only when we're dealing with that subject?
Only with the plan development topic.
With the plan development subject. And then I just had another question for you. On the hulks, how did the hostess issue resolve?
It remains with the two hostess stations, as I recall. So the idea, again, is, as we discussed, that the diner would come to the restaurant. They would ask or express their preference for indoor/outdoor seating, and then the hostess would seat them. But I think there was some thought about needing some monitoring in that outdoor area.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
And I had a question also about the hulks. I know the town council took away the limitation about the closing the patio at 10 o'clock. And I just wanted to ask, that is actually specified in our alcoholic beverage policy, or was that something that has been historically, you know, a precedent for the way we've implemented? I was trying, I didn't pull it out and look at it myself, but...
Right. There's the opportunity for the deciding body to make findings, to allow for nighttime use after 10:00 p.m. And so the council made those findings. And so that was their preference. They acknowledged that the town needed some late-night dining, fine dining opportunities, and they thought that this was a good location for it, given its location on Highway Nine.
But my question was, where does the 10:00 p.m. come from? It is actually in the alcoholic beverage policy, or, so?
It's in the policy. That policy is currently potentially going to be revised, or perhaps replaced with Town Code Amendment. It is a policy, it's not a law. So it is, the council could make a finding to do something different.
Okay. I mean, I watched the meeting on video last night. I was just trying to understand kind of like the policy aspects of it, and if there was something that, you know, should be thought of later, so.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Pravetti? Seeing none. Do any members of the commission have an issue to bring to the attention of the commission? No? Seeing none, this meeting, oh, Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to say, I was able to attend the green ribbon cutting for the bike lanes, the green bike lanes, and I thought it was a really great event. It was really well-attended by a lot of children and parents, and a really positive thing for the town, and I'm really excited that we have them, so.
Thanks for the feedback. Anyone else? Seeing no more correspondence? This meeting's adjourned.